I've got one bad eye and can't see out of the other this week, so.
Mr. Chair? We're on the air and ready to begin whenever you are, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Can you get to the right page here? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 10th, 2021 hearing of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
I never know whether to stand up for that or not. I guess I should.
I always, I always want to say amen at the end, so I'm confused.
There is a legal decision that struck that down, right?
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Vialobos, could you move to items two and three of the today's agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Po, San Ynez Valley, Samaria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays after 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Now, the real call. Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Park? I think Commissioner Park is just running a little late. Commissioner Blau?
Here.
And Chair Farini?
Here.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Wilson, good morning. How about items four and five?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. In regards to the status of the agenda today, we have one item on our consent calendar, and then we have two items listed on our standard agenda. However, there was a request for the first item to be continued to another date, and we can address that later on in the hearing. And then, so that would leave us as actually one item on our standard agenda, which is the capital improvements program presentation by long-range planning. So that concludes the standard agenda for today, and then I can move to the projection report if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please do.
So when we look at our projection report, our next hearing, regularly scheduled hearing would be on March 31st. And there are a number of items scheduled for that date. We have the Verizon project returning that was a continuance, and then we have two appeals of cannabis projects. And then we have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendments coming on March 31st for long-range planning amendments to the ordinance. So then our next hearing would be April 7th. After that, we have a project government coconsistency, and then we have Keysight 3 and Keysight 21 that was continued to that date on April 7th. And then on April, and then also on that date, we have a cannabis operation, Carpenteria, scheduled for that date. And then we canceled April 14th due to budget workshops, and then our next hearing after that is April 28th, and we have two, three appeals on there. Two of them are cannabis applications, cannabis operations, and then one is an appeal of an accessory dwelling unit project. Then after that, May 5th, we have another appeal of a cannabis operation. That concludes the projection report. However, Mr. Chair, if I could run a couple of things by the commission in regards to projection report, and Director Plowman will bring up some of these items during the director's report on the board supervisor meeting yesterday. However, there was a number of comments made during the quarter-two business license update, and one of them related to scheduling items at the planning commission. So I wanted to provide some information to the planning commission in regards to the projection report and offer some potential additional hearing dates if the commission schedule accommodates, and if the commission is willing to do that. Well, there was a comment about adding additional hearing dates if needed. So far, our projection report goes out till April 28th. Some options that we may consider if we wanted to add hearing dates the next couple of months would be March 24th, which we don't have a regularly scheduled because this month is a, have five weeks. So March 24th would be a special hearing date. As of now, we don't have any projects queued up that could actually go on March 24th unless the project that was scheduled for today would be ready to go on March 24th. But that would mean that we can bring this up later when that project is read into the record. But if we were to do a March 24th hearing, we'd have to have the staff partner everything done pretty much today for it to be docketed next week for the March 24th hearing. Other potential dates, when we're looking at our calendar, is on April 14th. We did cancel that hearing because of budget workshops. An additional item, we could potentially do a special hearing on a Friday, which would be April 23rd. We have the Montecito Planning Commission on that Wednesday. So as not to have two county planning commission hearings in one week, we could do an April 23rd, which would be a Friday, and maybe reserve that to one or two projects. So that could be a potential hearing date. Other than that, our calendar goes out till May 5th with only one item on there. When we look at potential adding hearing dates, I'm conscious of the planning commission's ability to read all the materials that is submitted and be prepared for hearings, especially when there's a number of controversial items and a lot of material in two hearings in a week. In addition, when we look at extra Wednesdays, looking throughout the rest of the year, June 23rd and September 22nd, we don't have regularly scheduled hearings because they would be an extra Wednesday. When you have five weeks, we have the opportunity to have extra Wednesdays. Otherwise, we could look at Fridays that are the week of the Montecito Planning Commission to give the planning commission an ability to not have two hearings in one week. So that's what we're looking as far as adding potential hearing dates. For the next couple of months, I threw out March 24th or April 23rd. We may consider those calendars permitted. Anyway, that's kind of where we're at. Staff is, they're trying to do three outputs. They're trying to approve permits, take appeals to the planning commission, and take appeals to the board. So we have a resource management issue in our department trying to make deliverables on all three of those fronts and deal with the calendar. So that's kind of the status of where we're at looking at the projection report. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I think, we'll see what the rest of the commission thinks, but I think we should hold that Friday 4/23 date open if that works for everyone. I am receiving phone calls about the problem of getting the cannabis projects through, you know, as LUPs and the appeals. And I know that in the past, as a commission, we discussed the extra load this would create. So I see Commissioner Park's hand is up, and then Commissioner Bradley following. Commissioner Park?
I've been a little puzzled by this issue of too many continuances or not enough hearings, however you want to look at it, because in January, we only had two hearings. We only had two hearings in December. I think it was October, no, November. At least three out of four months at the end of 2020, we only had two hearings a month, and we've, like I said, only had two in January, and I don't know where we're headed. And then when I look at the hearings that we do have, some are over by noon or before. We've had a few like that. We've had more that are over by noon than take all day, and most are done by early afternoon. So I, from the planning commission's point of view, I don't understand the countering problem. But what I'm hearing from Mr. Wilson, and it's a totally legitimate point and one that I need to understand better, it's getting the things prepared and to us from planning and development and keeping up with their schedule. So regardless of my comments about how we haven't seemed to have had so many hearings, and they haven't seemed to have gone very long, if we need to schedule other ones to make the whole system work, I'm totally game for it and just about available all the time. Other than now, I do volunteer work on Thursdays now, so I don't want to do it on Thursdays. But thanks for bringing the issue up to us, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Commissioner Bradley?
I was just gonna say the same thing. It seems like we have kind of light agendas and we're canceling hearings, but you know, that's a planning and development workload management. So I apparently have no other life. I'm not planning vacations. I will be here all year until I go berserk. So I'm a game for whatever additional hearings you want to plan, and Fridays are not an issue for me. So that's it.
Just a reminder.
At your new house.
No, to the Michigan Canyon area. Sorry.
All right. So what does that mean, Commissioner Bradley?
He said I'm available on Fridays and the Wednesdays that Secretary Wilson suggested as additional hearings. So that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one comment for staff in planning extra meetings. I have fingers crossed that we're about to play high school baseball for the next couple of months, and I don't have a final schedule yet, but I did notice that there was a game at 3:30 on the 23rd of April. Sounded like maybe just a couple of items would go on that agenda if we need it, which is no problem. But other than that, direct conflict, I don't have any problems with extra meetings.
Well, I hope baseball does get going here for the schools. That'd be great. Let's hope that that's a small problem we all have. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just want you to know that next week, I'm finally meeting with my orthopedic surgeon, and he is, this is the guy I've been two months trying to get a hold of, and I finally did. So we're meeting next week, and he'll give me the prognosis and what the deal is. But I'm sure I'm gonna have to have back surgery, and I don't know what the recovery time is, but I'll know before our next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Blau. Very good. Mr. Wilson, what, after all that, what do you, what do you think now?
Mr. Chair, I think I, maybe I've heard it wrong, except for maybe Commissioner Cooney, we need to end early in order to, if we did want to set a date for April 23rd. I am hearing that they do have standing press conferences due to the, providing information to the public on COVID-19. So if we do schedule a special hearing for April 23rd, we would need to end by probably the latest three, if not earlier, to allow CSB TV to transition over and to support the, that public information broadcast at, in the afternoon on the 23rd. So recommendation is that we could schedule it, but we want to keep it light to maybe one or maybe two items on that date. So we could end by noon if possible, so we could give CSB TV that time to switch over.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. Let's try that for now. Okay, so now we're on.
Mr. Chair, did you want to, do we want to actually have a motion to set a special hearing on that date so we, so staff can plan and work with applicants on that?
Okay, so we need, so moved. Okay. Was that Commissioner Park? Okay. In a second.
Sorry for not raising my hand.
Oh, and Commissioner Cooney?
I second the motion. For the 23rd is short agenda.
Very good. Commissioner Bradley?
Are we talking about any other dates beyond that, or is it just one date at a time vote?
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think at this time, we're only looking at the 23rd. Our projection report only goes out to May, which we actually have openings in May. So adding that April 23rd covers that April 14th cancellation. So we're not, we're actually making up for a canceled hearing with that April 23rd. So as of now, I don't think we have any other special hearings we want to set. At the next hearing, either on April, our next hearing, I can bring other dates forward if needed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vialobos? We're ready.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Commissioner Bradley, you're muted.
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Chair Farini?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Item six on our agenda is public comment. This is the time that anybody from the public can comment on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Vialobos?
Mr. Chair, we do have two speakers, but I believe that they are both signed up to speak on our consent agenda item. But if either one wants to speak on this item, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Looks like we have a taker.
Okay.
All right. Our speaker will be Leslie Pearson Ryan.
And this is on the CYN agenda item, the consent agenda item? If not, I have nothing to say about anything.
Okay, we're not, we're not quite there yet. This is, this would be for items not on the agenda.
Mute, mute me up.
All right, we'll get back to you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, I think that that was it.
Okay, we'll move to item seven, then, Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Bradley? Okay. Not seeing anyone else. We'll move to item eight, which would be the minutes of February 24th, 2021 for consideration. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These minutes were largely concerning the Polo Villas project that we saw last meeting and extensively set forth in the minutes. I don't remember reading minutes of this length, but they appear to me to be perfectly done. So applaud it to our staff, and I will move approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. And Commissioner Bradley?
I'll second that, and kudos also to staff.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I wasn't there for the whole meeting, so I'll be abstaining from voting on the approval. Even though I was there for the, I was there for the polo field, but there was things that went on after that that I can't vote on.
Okay, very good. Mr. Vialobos?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
And for the record, Commissioner Blau? I believe you said-
Chair.
And Chair Farini?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes 401.
Okay. All right. So now, item nine would be Director Plowman's report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Good morning.
Um, so I will start with our, our regular COVID update. We, we don't have any new information about when offices will open. The CEO is going to be looking at that as vaccinations become more broadly available. And at a time when we would be moving into a, to the red tier rather than the purple tier, and we're, we're still in the purple tier. So as, for the foreseeable future, we'll continue as we have been with all of our Zoom hearings and submittals of plans remotely or over the internet. I wanted to, again, just remind the planning commission that ADU's, the ordinance that's going to be effectuate the new state law, will be coming, as, as Jeff mentioned, on March 31st. It's going to the Montecito Planning Commission on the 17th. And if you have questions, and I know that LRP staff has reached out to commissioners, so if you guys have questions, please make sure, once you get your staff report, that you reach out to them and chat with them in advance, so you can get those questions answered. In terms of board action, I can report from what happened yesterday. The Elwood Quarry Canyon, I'm sorry, Elwood Canyon Quarry Appeal was denied, and that was because the parties managed to work it out and had come up with some changes to their project description regarding improvements to the road. So that was a positive outcome. It took a little bit of maneuvering, and I'm grateful for Scott McGulpin's help. He was out in the field, working with the parties to figure out what they could do about making sure there was sufficient width for cars and trucks to pass one another. So I think that was a, ended up being a good outcome. We did take the long-range work program to the board yesterday, and in general, they supported the, the program and moving it forward. They did talk about potentially adding another staff person, which would be considered as part of the budget workshops, to see if we can keep moving programs through that division. They did also talk about other long-term projects that they'd like to see on, in the work program, and that includes amendments to make it easier for childcare operators. And that would amend our ordinance. They talked about adding some amendments to our oil and gas regulations that require operators to be responsible for cleaning up facilities upon their departure. They talked about the possibility of adding the IV master plan back into the work program, because it has never successfully been adopted by the, by the board or the Coastal Commission. And there's a lot of good information in there and, and a, and a good structure for that community to, to work with. We discussed the possibility of creating more ministerial permits. That was a KPMG recommendation, and that will be in our long-term plan as ordinance amendments. And then, it's a discussion about community plans, possible area plans, and then the idea of try, try to consolidate our comprehensive plan under one cover with the effort to preserve the particular policies or standards that were, you know, worked on by PACs, GPACs, for their community. So we wouldn't want to lose this, the, the painstaking work that those groups do that are specific to that community, but we do want to try and consolidate policies where we can, to make it easier for applicants and to make it easier for staff when reviewing applications. So that's, that's a long-term project for LRP. So we'll know more when we get to the budget hearings as to whether or not they'll be adding a staff person, but in general, they supported the concept. There is a question about whether or not a potential ordinance amendment to the cannabis ordinance would be recommended by the board. There's, it came up under the quarterly report from the CEO's office on the business license process. There is some concern by the third district, at least, that there's over-concentration in the Santa Rita Hills. And we did not get any direction to actually move that forward at this point, but that, again, will come up during the budget workshops. And that would mean, if we added that to our program, we would have to delay or slow down work, I should say, on farm stays, ag enterprise ordinance, and utility-grade solar. So everything would just move a little bit slower if, if they asked us to, to do that. The issue of the terpene study did come up. One of the board members, I think Supervisor Nelson raised the question, and, well, the feedback that was given to the board was that there had been some efforts to secure such a study, and the CEO's office has been, or ag commissioner, I should say, has been unable to identify an institution of higher education that would be perceived as neutral to complete such a study. So there, there was an effort, but the board did not provide any further direction to pursue it at yesterday's meeting. Let me see. And then, in terms of upcoming hearings, we will be, we're still working to get the Oasis project back on a hearing. They're, they're still trying to resolve some of the issues that are necessary to do that. We will be hearing a lotline adjustment appeal from Montecito Planning Commission in April on the 6th, and then the CREF applications will be going forward on May 4th to the board. Or a presentation about the CREF applications. So I think, just this question about adding more hearings, I think when we need to, I think it's a good idea to be adding these hearings. There's a mixture of reasons is why we haven't had necessarily full agendas. Sometimes, you know, like what we'll hear today, Sunstone, they're working out a resolution, which is great. But that, what happens is at the last minute, then we have a light hearing. So it's a, it's kind of a complicated mixture of things that allow us to move our projects forward, but we will work with the commission to see where we can add hearings and move things along. I mean, we're very supportive of the idea that these, the growers and the appellants are trying to work these problems out. And sometimes that is one of the factors that results in, in what we're seeing. So I think that's all I have to report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Director Plowman. I have, I think, three hands up, now four. So Commissioner Blau, did you have something? And you are muted.
Yes, thank you. Just curious to know where, where the county's at with the retail cannabis operations and selecting sites.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, actually, we have, Secretary Wilson is part of that process, but they are in the process of doing site visits and assessing the applications. I don't know the date of when the hearing will be, but I can, we can certainly report that back to you. But they're moving that along right now. They're in the middle of it.
Any prognosises when they're gonna be done with it?
Secretary Wilson, can you weigh in on that?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the goal is to try to, to complete the phase three, phase three by the end of this month. That, that's the most I can say at the moment. We're evaluating all the applications that were submitted and try to, or try to complete the review by the end of this month.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I think Commissioner Bradley was next.
Thank you. Director Plowman, you brought up some very interesting things for me, and I honestly don't remember us talking about all of these when we looked at the long-range planning report, but I may have missed it. A couple of things that really get my interest are the childcare ordinance amendments, because years ago, I actually had a case for a senior care facility concept that would mirror the childcare rules. In other words, you know, you can do six and under for kids with, I think, a minor, actually, a RIDE, and then 12 and under with a minor CUP or something like that. But in the code, there's no place to actually do senior care homes like that. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm just encouraging planning and development to look at that, because I think our demographic is shifting, and that might be, maybe it's something that belongs with that same effort, because it's a similar, you know, kind of like a congregant care, a care unit with either a minor CUP or maybe an LUP. But I'm just encouraging you to look at senior care or senior facility things that way.
Yeah.
With a slightly, maybe with a slightly expanded population to make it easier, because that's our demographics soon. So that, just one comment, I mean, we don't have to discuss it, I guess. But, and then the discussion about the community plans and the area plans, that was very interesting to me, because, you know, I struggle with these community plans. And what, I guess your point was that you're thinking about going back and touching those at all? I thought for at least three years, what I'd heard from planning was, there's no budget to touch the community plans at all. Don't even think about it in your lifetime. You know, there's no budget. We have so many other things we have to do. So what is it about the community area plans that might be on the horizon?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bradley, so what we're talking about is not getting into each community plan, although there will be some of that when we go through the housing element update, because we're gonna have to look at how we're gonna accommodate housing in each of our communities. But we're not looking at scheduling updates to the community plans.
It's just using the GPACs?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're looking at, it's something similar to what Ventura County did. They just updated their general plan, and what they did is they took all of their community plans and they put it under one document. Basically, the, their general plan, or what we would call our comprehensive plan. So that means we will have one plan, and then we will have sections that would include the special policies that came out of those community plans for each community. But there's a lot of overlap on policy. And so what we would want to try and do is consolidate where we can, and then maintain the policies that were developed in those community plans. It's, it was a KPMG recommendation, too.
Okay. I'm not really sure what's so broken with the way the plans are working now, because you're finding that there's overlap in all the staff analyses between comp planting and the area plans. Okay, that seems like a huge effort, but-
It would be a huge effort. It would be. Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's, it's a significant effort. But I think that's probably the direction that we'll be, we'll be moving in, provided the board supports that.
And it's, it's actually very interesting, because I think you might feel some community kickback. I know a lot of the communities in the county are, are very beholden to their community plans. I don't know that they want to share in a bigger mega-document with the rest of the county. It'll be an, an interesting exercise. So, okay, that was just a question.
Well, the unique policies will be preserved, but there's no reason we need five, or six, or seven, or eight different policies about VMTs. We don't. So there's just, it, it's, it's a complicated system for our applicants and for staff to have multiple documents. So it's just, it's, it's, it's a, what, when one would consider a process improvement, but the board would certainly have to support it.
That's a lot of word processing right there. Okay. Appreciate that. I think that the terpene study, that this is also really interesting, because I know, you know, the commission has asked about this over and over. So just the, the fact that the ag commissioner says that she hasn't found a higher institution of learning to pursue this, I'm wondering, is this now considered dead in the water by the county? Or is there some, you know, we have these other private consultants that have worked for the cannabis industry. I guess I just don't want to let it die at that level, although I've heard some people from the winery industry say that they really feel it's important to have any analysis done by, you know, a UC Davis or a UC level of, you know, university-level research team. So I guess I'm just wondering if, if the ag commissioner came up with not a, what's, is there anything next?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bradley, we have not received, or she has not received, direction from the board to pursue it any further. That's all I can tell you at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Cooney?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think it was covered by the question from Commissioner Bradley on terpenes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Park?
Two things. One is the consolidation of the community plans. I think that's a really good idea. I find that even with the community plan, I'm most familiar with, the San Andres Valley one, it's sitting right in front of me, that most people that are in the planning process, whether public planners or even, even our own staff, are not familiar with all of its provisions. And I think that it will benefit the public and make our hearings more rational if we have that consolidation. So I, I know it's a little bit hard to understand the purpose for it, or perhaps, and, and that it looks like a big undertaking, but I think it's a valuable thing. So I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Ms. Plowman. On the terpene study, I'm trying to do this in a way that's not being an I told you so, but when we last discussed this subject, I suggested that we have a workshop or a hearing of some sort, so we could get input on where to get a study, when to get it, what it should include, and, and look at all the things that have happened in, in recent months on testing and so forth. And, and that we, we form a recommendation for the board. And, and we didn't do that. And this matter comes up in front of the board in sort of a haphazard way, and I don't think it's very well understood by board members and members of the public, or even us. And, and I think that it's a, it's a, it's a missing link in resolving this, this, this war we have going on here. And it's an important missing link, and we should more rationally and carefully deal with it. So I would like to, at some point, schedule some sort of hearing, so we go forward. You know, I, I have over 40 years of hiring expert witnesses on important litigation, and the idea that here we have this massive problem that's bothering so many people here in this county, and we can't go forward because there's only one UC Davis professor in the world that can, can do this study, and if that person is deemed to be not neutral, then we just stop. I think that says more about our process in considering how to do this study than it does about whether it's really possible or not. So thank you for bringing it up and reporting on it.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, just, this is a question for Ms. Richardson and maybe for Mr. Clemmon. One of the prior meetings, I talked about the idea of doing a bit of a different subdivision mapping to where if, if it was, let's say, 7,000 square foot lots, we would have, you know, 3,500 feet in- we would have, you know, 3,500 feet in the building envelope, and 3,500 feet in the common area in the association. The idea being is that with CCNRs or other things, we can't prohibit ADUs. But if we develop our subdivision lines such that it is impossible to put one on there, other than a garage conversion, maybe, would that work? As I know there are some subdivisioners like myself who have certain projects in mind, and we do not want ADUs, because they don't work within the project. But if we have a, if the ownership of the excess land is in the association, they don't have the ability to actually approve an ADU, because they're not going to be financially responsible for it. I don't know if you could answer that question today, but I'd love to get it on the radar at some point in the future to tell me if that's possible or not.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, sort of two responses. One, for private projects, we're a bit at the mercy of what the applicant is proposing. But secondarily, I looked into it a little bit more after you had raised that at the last hearing. And it appears that, at least currently, in ADU rules change fairly often from the state. In non-condominiums, CCNRs cannot prohibit ADUs. But it looks like currently, in condominiums, the CCNRs can prohibit ADUs. But that may change.
Well, the issue is, I'm not trying to prohibit them, because I know you can't do that. But I'm just saying that what happens if the lot line and around the particular house, I mean, we all have five- and ten-foot setbacks on all sides. So with five- and ten-foot setbacks on four sides, it's impossible to put an ADU in there. Or, let me put it this way, maybe that'd be impossible, but it's so expensive, you can't believe it. We're talking about two-hour firewalls and all kinds of other stuff to get closer than that to the property lines. So I just want to know if an applicant comes to us with that kind of design, are we able to approve it? And does that actually prohibit ADUs, because there's no land space to put one on?
Commissioner Blau, through the chair, if I may, for the record, this is Dan Clemmon, Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. Couple of just quick thoughts. First off, all really good questions. What I will say only generally at this point, because this isn't really agendaized to be discussed, and I'll get to that in a second, is that there are really four different categories of ADUs. So if you go through all four of those, I would actually be surprised if at least one of those options were not available to a property owner. Indeed, we're going through these regulations very carefully right now as we draft the ordinance amendments. And what we're finding is that, you know, there is a lot of flexibility, a lot of opportunities out there. So I'd be curious to see a specific example or situation, and then we could take a look at, okay, given the proposed regulations, how would that play out in that scenario? The second, I think we should defer this conversation to March 31st, that's when your-
Mr. Clemmon, I'm not asking you to discuss it today. I was just bringing it up, so that, I need to know if it's on your radar to discuss it at a later time, when you can agendaize it. You know, that's what I'm asking for.
We got it. Thank you.
All right, I think we got through that. Thank you, Director Plowman.
No problem. Happy to be here.
Okay. All right, item 10 is consent agenda items for today. The first one would be C1. Mr. Diologos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following, the hearing on the request of the Carpentry Unified School District, consider case number 21GOV2, an application for determination that the disposition of certain real property conforms with the comprehensive plan of the county's Santa Barbara pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65402A.
Thank you, Mr. Diologos. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had a conversation with a member of the Summerland community about this project. This is one proposed by the Carpentry Unified School District. And given the interest of the community and also representative of the school district being here, I'd like to take this off the consent agenda and allow those public speakers to express themselves.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney, that sounds great. How do we move forward with doing that?
I just make a motion to do that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so-
If I'm correct, I think any member of the commission has the right to pull it from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda. I don't think you need a motion to do that. I could be wrong, but that's been the way it's been in the past.
Mr. Wilson, we want to pull this off the consent agenda and put it under the regular agenda. How do you advise us to move forward?
Chair members of the commission, you don't need a motion to move it off. I think, Chair, your direction will be to move it from the consent to the standard. Basically, you have to pull the agenda off, pull it off the consent and open it up for discussion, so we can move forward based on Commissioner Cooney's request to pull it from the consent agenda item. So we could just move forward as if it's a standard agenda at this point.
Okay, my question would be, this is under Ms. Harris and Ms. Brown. Are they ready to proceed, or do we need to move it till later in the day?
Mr. Chair, I see Ms. Harris is available, and I think, I don't know if they have a presentation, but she's available to answer any questions. And then after that, we can move to public comment after how many questions of staff.
Chair, commissioners, we do have a short presentation that Ms. Brown will do, if you do pull it off the agenda, pull it off the consent agenda, rather.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris, and I see Ms. Brown there. So at Commissioner Cooney's request, we are pulling item C1 off of the consent agenda and moving it on to today's regular agenda. I guess at this time, then, I would ask if any of the planning commissioners have any site visits or ex parte that they would like to report. Commissioner Brightley, your hand is up.
Yes, I actually spoke with Leslie Person Ryan about this, and also Jim Pujon, the First District Office, and also did a site visit on Monday, just drove by the sites.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also had a conversation with Ms. Ryan and with Craig Price, who is the attorney for the school district. And I suggested to him that he might want to participate in this matter if it is off the consent agenda. So he is here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Okay, we would move to staff presentation. Ms. Brown?
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I will now be presenting the proposal for the Carpentry Unified School District disposition of land. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the subject site. The property outlined in red on this map is located in the Summerland area off of Whitney Avenue. Next slide, please. The Carpentry Unified School District is proposing to dispose of surplus property to provide needed funds for the district. The property is 6.4 acres of rural residential zone land and is currently undeveloped. The disposal of land would be consistent with the intent of the residential ranchette land use designation and the comprehensive plan, including the Summerland Community Plan. Staff recommends that your commission determine that the proposed disposal of land conforms with the comprehensive plan, including the Summerland Community Plan, and transmit a conformity report to the Carpentry Unified School District and to the Board of Supervisors. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that your commission has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I've not seen any hands raised on the commission. We will move on to the applicant's presentation or testimony. I see Commissioner Blau, you have your hand up now.
Yeah, I do, thank you. Could we see that aerial one more time, the first one? The brown patch? Yeah, okay. So, what size housing is to the south of the star?
Chair and commissioners, at single-family development, we would, I believe it's zoned 7R1, and then it looks like there's 10R2 zoning below it. But what the current property is, is zone, I believe, rural five-acre minimum parcel size, and the property is about 6.84 acres. So the property could not be subdivided under the existing zoning and general plan designation.
Okay, well, I'll be asking the question later, perhaps, of the applicant. Well, the school district's attorney, there was a given consideration to do the rezoning and make it the same zoning as the property to the south of it. And I say that for two reasons. One, we have a significant shortage in arena numbers. And I'm also always curious to try and help fund schools whenever possible. So that would do both, but that's maybe under deliberations, but that's going to be a question for the applicant. Has that been considered?
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Okay, does the applicant have a presentation?
If you're ready for me, I am prepared to comment on this item.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. As Commissioner Cooney indicated, I'm the attorney for the Carpentry School District. The district has owned this site since 1955. For years, it was under consideration as a possible location for the existing Summerland School to be moved. However, after years of deliberations, the planning went forward instead to completely rebuild Summerland School in its existing location. And to that end, your staff currently has before it a application, a completed application for a CDP. And the district is extremely anxious to have this matter come before your commission. And we would love for that to occur during the month of April. And just going sideways for about thirty seconds. The reason for that is that the district needs to start construction this summer. The pupils are being moved to downtown Carpentry. And we're waiting for the DSA approval, Division of State Architect, which we expect to get very soon. And with your approval, after consideration, we'll be ready to go to bid and start construction hopefully this summer. The property is going through the procedural steps to be sold later this year, when the current pilot ag lease with Ms. Person Ryan is concluded. The urgency of the sale is due to the fact that the Summerland School rebuild project has been budgeted for $6.2 million out of the Measure B bond funds. However, we're advised already that the estimates for that project are now over $1 million in excess of the currently allocated funds. So the sale is very much needed at this time, and that is part of the urgency in our going forward and pursuing the various procedural steps. In response to Commissioner Blau, relative to a potential rezoning, I would suggest that that would be something that might be under consideration for a potential buyer of the site. Right now, for the school district to attempt to undergo a rezoning, obviously would be something that would likely entail years. And the Carpentry School District doesn't have those years, nor frankly, would it wish to undergo the public scrutiny that's associated with the type of rezoning that we're talking about. It'd be much more appropriate for the ultimate purchaser of the property to do that. And then lastly, in terms of the sale, which is anticipated late this year, the sale process is dictated by the California Education Code. And it is a requirement of the code that the property be sold by means of taking sealed bids at a public meeting of the Board of Education and awarding the sale or making the sale to the highest bidder. And so we are en route to pursuing that process. And Ms. Person Ryan has been told that certainly, if there is enough interest to raise the kind of money that we estimate that the property is going to need to be sold for, which is well over $1 million, then they are certainly invited to put in a sealed bid. But we don't have an alternative process for pursuing the disposition of the property. So, thank you very much for hearing me out, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And if you have any questions now or after the other public comments, I can attempt to answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Chair, of Mr. Price. Mr. Price has outlined a process that we are a very small part of, as he knows. But he did mention that the sale would not occur, that is, this sealed bid portion of the process, assuming everything else went smoothly until later in the year. But how how much is the district resigned to holding off the sale until the current lease, I think it's up in November, would be finished?
The plan has been discussed with Diana Rigby, the superintendent, is for my office, on behalf of the district, to follow certain procedural steps, because it's complicated, just like it is for the county to sell land. So various notices need to be posted, communications need to occur. We need to go to the board for approval of a resolution before setting a hearing date for the opening of bids. So realistically, that's not going to occur until November, which would coincide with the expiration of the current lease. So we're thinking that that is the earliest and most practical date for our ability to actually obtain a buyer of the property. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cooney?
The source of my concern is that if there is a will on the part of the community to participate in the bid process, there'd be an opportunity to raise the funds. And if the bidding was going on sometime sooner, say this summer, you know, that would greatly handicap that effort. So I wanted to understand from the district what its planned timeframe is, and you've answered that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just, this is a question for Mr. Price, and probably also for- Yeah, I just, a question for Mr. Price and probably also for staff. The county has a procedure where you can't do a zone change unless you ask their permission to do so. Asking for permission to apply for a zone change is a relatively inexpensive and relatively quick procedure. I'm just trying to, I'm the guy that would be the one that may want to, you know, buy and develop the property, although not me, I'm not going to go far that far south. But if you were to get a substantial approval from the commission down the board for a reason on that property or an indication that they're, you know, it's kind of like if they, if there was no chance of getting it, they wouldn't allow you to apply for the zone change. If there's a good chance you're going to get it, they'd allow you to apply for it. Just the fact that you've got that kind of a procedure in your hand could make a substantial difference on how much someone would pay for the school district's property. I just give you that as an option, you may want to discuss that with the status, see if you want to do that. But this property being used as a five-acre is a waste of the property's value, I just got to tell you. I'd just like to see the school district get a whole lot more than $1 million for that property, which I think they would if there was an indication that it could be subdivided to, you know, four or five units to the acre. You're talking a substantial amount of money. My comments to you, you may want to consider that.
If I might respond?
Yes, please.
I thank Commissioner Blau for that suggestion, and I can assure you that we will pursue a discussion with Ms. Plowman or other P and D staff to consider the possibility of that occurring. But we're hoping that any such discussion doesn't wind up deterring the work that staff has underway and bringing a report before you for us to get a CDP approval for the Summerland School. That is particularly urgent. Again, thank you for the suggestion.
Commissioner Bradley?
Sorry about that. This has raised a lot of other issues in my mind, but I, and I just heard again what Mr. Price said about the CDP for the school project, because I actually watched the Sbar meeting of the school design, and I know they worked hard and long on that, it's going to be a great school. So, this is somehow tied to pulling the final CDP for construction of the school? Is that what I'm understanding? Maybe Mr. Price can clarify, or Ms. Brown?
Chair and Commissioners, this is a 65402 government conformity request. It is not tied to a CDP. So, your commission is tasked with determining if the sale of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Summerland Community Plan pursuant to 65402.
Yeah, and I totally understand that. I've done lots of 65402s for Galita, but Mr. Price actually made some reference to the CDP somehow tagging with this process, or maybe the CDP can't be issued until the 65402 is done? I guess I don't really understand that. It's a different site. Maybe someone can clarify for me.
Good morning.
I can, if you wish.
Hang on, Mr. Price, we have someone.
This is Deputy Director Travis Seawards. Hi, good morning. There is a CDP for a different, on a different property, does not relate to this project site, but it is with the Carpinteria School District. But the approval of this 65402 is not dependent on the approval of the CDP at the other site, just to be clear. Completely separate project.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
I'm sorry for introducing any confusion into the discussion, but quite frankly, I wanted to use this opportunity to mention what's pending in regard to the Summerland School, just to be able to highlight the urgency of the other unrelated matter. So, forgive me for bringing it up. But we're breathless in anticipating a hearing date so we can get moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
Yeah, so one last question. The Summerland School is part of the Carpinteria Unified School District, right? You guys merged ages ago, I think. So, the sale of this, is there something internally in the school district that is designating this funding toward the Summerland School project, or is it going to be commingled with everything else that the Carpinteria School District has underway, which is considerable, including in the city of Carp? How is it that the funding from this sale is going straight to the Summerland School? Is that your position?
It's not my position, it is the position of the district superintendent that the Measure V bond funds that have been allocated to reconstruct the Summerland School, meaning $6.2 million, is now determined to be more than $1 million short. And so, the proceeds from the sale of this property are going to be used to, you know, in effect backfill into the Summerland School project, which, as you all obviously know, is a major sum of money and a major commitment by the school district to serve the children of Summerland, only 50 students. And it's been a very, very long time coming. The community has been very patient, and everyone, including, you know, the various interest groups in Summerland and so on, are very excited. And I'm pleased to see that you too are looking forward to the project. It's a great school with a long superlative history.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Now, we would move on to public comment. Mr. Vialobos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker again is Leslie Persson Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me. As you know, by Mr. Price, this property was willed to Summerland School in the 50s. Somehow, it got into the Carpinteria Unified School District. There was some discussion at a Summerland Citizens Association meeting about 18 months ago on trying to stop the sale of the property and utilize it for Summerland. And the person who got on that committee, Klaus Linderhold, told me that he was able to try to delay the sale of that property, and unfortunately, Klaus passed away recently. You know that the, our community plan was made way, way before the dire need of Summerland in food insecurity. So, our last grocery store closed around the mid 2015 to 17, and then our only option for food in Summerland has made it a crisis. We are a government-certified food desert, and during the debris flow, Summerland could not move north or south, and they were stuck in a community that was actually physically fighting over food. There was no internet, no telephone or television, but most importantly, the food insecurity made it so that women were fighting over the last sale sandwich at the liquor store. It's time to look at food insecurity in Summerland, and it's time to look at our community plan. You did mention the Summerland Community Plan, and I did talk to people who made that community plan, who are highly behind the farm stain there and trying to solve the food desert in Summerland. We need to have time for this community to raise this money, to keep it open, preserve. Commissioner Blau, it is bordering a wetland, preserve as well. Some of that property is protected already. And to rezone it would, it is RR5, which does include farming right now, and it's, this community in two days raised over 100 signatures within pre-COVID because we did not know this was coming up in front of you. So, I believe that we can get 100% of this community behind keeping this for a Summerland farm and for a community asset. I'm totally willing to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker will be Whitney Castro. Ms. Castro, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi, sorry, I was trying to figure it out. Hi, everyone. I'm a Summerland resident here, and I've been working with Leslie on Santa Barbara Agriculture and Food Board, and I'll keep this short and sweet, but essentially, we, I'm just going to repeat what Leslie has said, but we, I have talked with everyone in our community over the last, like Leslie said, the two days, and just try to raise awareness because we did not know this was coming forth, and people are ready to act and ready to move and ready to donate and sign and do whatever it is to make the Carp School District still get the money they need to proceed with any other developments while still retaining this land to be useful to our community. We've also received over like 30 comments over the last two days that people wanted to share here, but I couldn't figure out how to post those, but I'd be happy to share this with the Planning Commission as well. I worked at a Patagonia inventor, and I've also aligned with our public relations team down there, and we have a big push to keeping this land open. I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you so much for hearing us.
Mr. Vialobos is at the end of the public speakers?
Mr. Chair, yes, that was our last speaker.
Okay, very good. Do we have anything from the applicant like to add, Mr. Price?
Nothing further from me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And the staff have anything they'd like to add?
Chair and Commissioners, not at this time.
Any questions of Planning Commission members before we close public comment? Okay, not seeing any. We will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing, and then we can move on to the Planning Commission discussions. Mr. Cooney, Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly don't want to foreclose any comments from my fellow Commissioners. However, I've had a little more time to think about the community's interest, which I learned about yesterday, to speak with Mr. Price subsequently. And I do think that the community of Summerland has been a real positive story in terms of being able to raise funds for particular purposes. The school being proposed, where it is and with a wonderful design is for the benefit of the community of Summerland. So, whether funds can be raised to purchase the open property being sold by the district or not is a real question, but they should have the opportunity, and it sounds like they're going to have enough time to learn whether that's possible or not. Regardless of all that, and despite the benefit of airing this in public that we have done this morning, I don't think there's any choice for the commission but to approve the consistency determination that is before us, and at the appropriate time, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, as soon as he makes the motion, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Park?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I would join in and support the motion. I think Mr. Cooney made a very good point that the community has expressed some interest. And the community, of course, or portions of it, have the same right as any other buyer to try to buy the property. It sounds like they need a little bit of time to put that together, I understand that. It's not really our issue, but it sounds from what Mr. Price said, there will be some time, and the community will have an opportunity to try to put together a bid, which seems like a logical thing. And just musing about what we've been hearing today and getting more staff, people, and this and that, as this property goes from public to private ownership, at least with some buyers, it'll be a very substantial property tax generator. So, that's of some relevance.
Thank you, Commissioner Park, Commissioner Bradley?
I guess there's just deliberations, but I concur with what Commissioner Cooney said with the government code. Your, our findings are very limited, our action is very limited, so I'm inclined to support the motion too. I just think it's a great way that a different kind of community energy is coming forward through the planning process here with Ms. Persson's suggestions about keeping it in a different land use. And, you know, hopefully, I wish her luck in pursuing that and raising money to purchase this for a possible ag, maybe it's a mixed-use thing. I just hope it's not cannabis, but hopefully, something can come of it, and appreciate the Commissioners' consideration of all the issues relating to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Okay, Commissioner Cooney, I think we're ready for your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to adopt the recommendation of staff set forth in our staff report on page three, primarily that we determine the proposed disposal of this parcel conforms with the comprehensive plan, including the Summerland Community Plan, and then that we transmit this report both to the school district and to the Board of Supervisors.
I will second that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Vialobos, could you do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Chair Farini?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, very good. I'm going to recommend a 15-minute break, and then we'll come back and move on to the next item. move on to the next item. Big rain, we're worried about the hail, for sure.
This, we just got hail and I hope it doesn't go there.
Even the Mesa had, the Mesa had hail for 50 seconds this morning. It was so exciting.
Mr. Chair, we're back on the, we're back on the air.
Back to business. Well, welcome back to the March 10th Planning Commission meeting for San Barbara County. Mr. Vialobos, we're going to move on to our standard agenda now. Item one, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of joint appellants Tim Christ to consider et cetera, to consider case number 28PL38, an appeal of the Planning Director's approval of case number 19LUP342.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I believe that the planner and supervising planner are here.
Okay, Ms. Lahren, Ms. Bandler?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm here. I wasn't sure if you wanted me to start my, my comments yet, or if you had other things you wanted to say.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, please, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. As you saw in the memorandum that we shared with you last week, the applicant and appellant contacted us and requested to continue this project. We are, they requested to continue it essentially. We're hoping for the April 28th hearing. And the reason they want to continue it is in order to continue refining some details in their odor abatement plan. And so they're working out some of those details currently in addition to cultivation setbacks. So if you have any questions, I'm here. I believe we also have the attorney for both the appellate and the applicant here. If you want more information on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Park?
I'm thinking that, I'm just wondering if we're supposed to make our ex parte disclosures today or not? If with this being a request for continuance. I think it'll take longer to make the ex parte disclosures than it will be to deal with a continuance request. But anyway, I'm just wondering about that. And I'm also wondering if we got a brief presentation from the attorneys for each side? Just so we get some idea of how likely this is to actually occur? The deal.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Park. So yes, let's go back up through the procedures here and ask for Planning Commissioners' site visits and ex parte. Commissioner Park, why don't you lead us off?
Where shall I begin? I've had numerous phone conversations with Courtney Taylor, attorney for the appellants. I've had phone conversations with Teddy Kabugos, main person in the application. I've had meetings onsite or next to the site with both the appellants, Mr. Christ and Nancy Hunsacker of the, of the Question Center. But also onsite with Gail Ray McCon and Stephen Peterson and I forget who else at the site. And I've also met with the attorney for the applicant, I think. And I've just met with a lot of people about this. And I'm forgetting who. So there.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and go down my site visit. I did a site visit at Sunstone with Commissioner Park on February 20th. And as he said, Teddy Kabugos was there. Gail Ray McCon, Stephen Peterson and Olivia Marr is who I met with. I've also had a few phone conversations with Mr. Christ, the appellant. I have not been able to coordinate my schedule to do a site visit with him, but this will give me some time to do that now. Commissioner Bradley?
Simole, I actually had a site visit up there with Mr. Kabugos, Ms. Makin, it says long A on her pronunciation, and Stephen Peterson and Olivia Marr. That was actually last Friday. I haven't talked to any of the appellants. That's my disclosure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now let's go back and ask for an app, appellant presentation.
Mr. Chair, maybe the Commissioner, if I could interrupt for a second?
Okay. Okay.
I think the item before you, or what was before the commission day is a continuance. And we don't have a staff presentation. I don't, I think the question for the appelleurs and applicants is, is the hearing date. We did add that April twenty third date this morning, so that may actually be another option than what was provided in the memo, which was April twenty eighth. So I think we'd want to get concurrence with the applicants and appellants on that continuance date. Otherwise, I don't think we have any presentations on the actual project today, as there wasn't anything provided the commission other than that memo, I believe, on this item. And I have, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lehrer, Chair, if you would like, if she could provide some clarification on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioner Park. Hang on a sec, Commissioner Park. Comment.
This is just a question for staff as well, and it goes to the date. That goes to my prior comment. I'd, I'd like to hear from the appellate and applicant's attorneys for a few seconds, just to know how likely this is to occur and when. As I don't want us to arbitrarily set a date that makes it very hard for staff, because they hear about a final deal at the very last moment. It's one that's likely to involve a change in the project description from what's in front of us. And so I think we, we do need to approve the project. It will need some sort of a hearing, even if it's, even if, even if there's a settlement. So I just want to be sure that we line up with a date that works well for staff.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Park. So back to staff then.
Thank you, commissioners. I believe that April twenty third date would work. We've received some of the updated materials. But we will need to coordinate with the applicant and the appellant as to when we can get the remainder of those details to ensure we can make April twenty third.
Thank you, Ms. Lehrer. Commissioner Bradley.
I just want to follow up with what Commissioner Park said. If this is an appeal, if the two parties work it out and their appeal is withdrawn, then actually we don't see it, right? Question for staff.
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. That depends, I think, if the project is able to remain the same and there are no changes. If the appeal is withdrawn, this matter will not be before the planning commission. However, if the agreements result in some changes to the project, that still may need to go before the planning commission for a de novo approval to include these changes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess counsel for the appellant, are you in agreement to what staff is proposing?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Farini, Courtney Taylor, on behalf of the appellants. And yes, we are happy with the currently scheduled April twenty eighth hearing continuance date, but I have also confirmed that we can make the other proposed date work as well. And I believe that's the case for the applicant. So if that date, as Commissioner Park indicated, is better for staff and works, we are also open to continuing it to that date.
Okay, thank you. And do we have the other counsel weighing in?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Olivia Marr for the applicant. And April twenty third works well for us, so we'd actually prefer, prefer that date if it's available.
Okay, and are you okay with the twenty eighth if the twenty third doesn't work out?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Parker, are you ready?
So, yeah, but just, so a question for the attorneys. You know, the staff report's going to come out a week before the twenty third. Staff has to be able to dock it and kind of go through it to review process a week before that. And, and they're going to need to know there's a deal and what the terms are a good two and a half, three weeks before the twenty third. So can you deliver? Are you making progress? Do you think you can deliver? I know you can't say for sure, but what, what are the odds? That's, that's my question. I've asked it three times now.
Commissioner Park, Olivia Marr. Yeah, I mean, we're working cooperatively. We've been working for quite some time. And so I'm pretty confident that we'll know either way and we'll, we'll be ready by, by the twenty third and well in time for getting information to staff.
And because it's a settlement, it's, as opposed to a capitulation, it's likely to have some alteration in the project description. Is that correct?
It will, less, minor, but yes.
So it'll be a de novo hearing for us. Okay, well, so I will move to adopt the continuance request to now I forgot what date now staff wants. Is it the twenty third or the twenty eighth you want?
Chair, Chair Farini and Commissioner Park, I think the day would be April twenty third. And then we do need to have public comment on the continuance before we, we take the motion.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, well, at least let's, let's, let's stick with the twenty third and then public can comment on that.
Just for thought, I'll second it.
All right, so let's see if we have any public comment on today's item.
Mr. Chair, we don't have any public comment on this.
Okay. All right, well, we'll close the public comment period then. And we have now a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to call the roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, great. Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and I see Mr. Lackey in the room there, so I think we're ready to move on to item two then. Mr. Villalobos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Board of Supervisors to review the proposed new projects in the five-year CIP for fiscal years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five and report to the Board of Supervisors as to their conformity with a comprehensive plan pursuant to government code sections six five four oh one and six five four oh two. Good morning, Mr.
Excellent. Good morning, Mr. Lackey. Hey, let me ask, well, I guess we don't need any site visits or ex parte, so never mind. It's all, it's all on you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Our next item before you today is the comprehensive plan conformity review for the five-year capital improvement program. And today, Karina Venegas, who is the project manager for this review, will be giving the presentation. So I'll turn it over to her.
Good morning and thank you. Good morning, Chair Farini and commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Karina Venegas. And today, for your review and consideration, I will be presenting an overview of the twenty twenty five capital improvement program, also referred to as CIP, for conformity review with the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The purpose of this hearing is for your commission to review the new capital projects included in the five-year capital improvement program as referred by the Board of Supervisors, and to consider the conformity of these projects with the comprehensive plan pursuant to government code sections six five four zero one and six five four zero two. Next slide. In the following four slides, I will give a brief overview of the CIP process and government code requirements. Beginning with the process, the CIP is a compilation of county-proposed capital projects to implement various plans, including the comprehensive plan. The CIP is prepared and administered by the county executive office. And while the CIP does cover a five-year planning period, it is updated annually to reflect ongoing changes, such as new projects that are added and completed projects that are excluded. This slide shows how today's hearing fits within the annual CIP process as a whole. The process begins with each county department submitting proposed new projects to the CEO in the winter. The CIP is then developed by the budget and research division in the spring. In October of twenty twenty, the Board of Supervisors conceptually approved the CIP and forwarded the new CIP projects to your commission for conformity determination. Today, your commission will review the new projects within the CIP for conformity with the comprehensive plan. And staff will recommend that you forward your findings to the Board of Supervisors to receive and file at a hearing in mid twenty twenty-one. Moving on to government code requirements, section six five four zero one requires that the county prepares a list of new projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction. That the county performs an annual programmatic level review of new capital projects. That the county determines conformity of the new projects with the comprehensive plan. And for the planning commission to report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. And finally, government code section six five four zero two requires that the county performs a level, a project level review of new capital projects that require any of the following. Acquisition or disposal of real property, vacation or abandonment of streets, or construction of public structures. As with six five four zero one, section six five four zero two requires conformity determination of the new projects with the comprehensive plan. It also requires the planning commission to report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. There are a total of twenty-five new projects included in the CIP for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. However, there are five projects located outside of county jurisdiction. One project is located in the city of Santa Maria, and four projects are located in the city of Santa Barbara. Therefore, only twenty of the twenty-five new projects are subject to conformity analysis pursuant to government code sections six five four zero one and six five four zero two. Staff reviewed all twenty new projects for conformity with section six five four zero one and conformity with the comprehensive plan. A departmental breakdown of the twenty-five projects is as follows. Seventeen projects belongs to general services, one for fire, two for public works flood control, and five for public works transportation. Attachment B of the planning commission staff report includes a list of all twenty-five new projects and their associated conformity analysis for the purposes of sections six five four zero one and, if applicable, six five four zero two. These new projects include equipment purchases, infrastructure improvements, facility maintenance programs, and construction of new public structures. Staff recommends that eighteen of the twenty projects are found in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Two projects will require future conformity review, which I will address in a later slide. And as previously mentioned, five projects are located outside of the county jurisdiction and are not subject to conformity review. The two projects listed on this slide involve acquisition of property or construction of public buildings or structures, and therefore are subject to further review pursuant to government code section six five four zero two. Additionally, these two projects necessitate additional review to determine, to determine the conformity. And finally, attachment C of the staff report includes the two projects for which the conformity determination could not be made at this time. Location, project description information, and property acquisition have not yet been finalized for these projects. And therefore, further analysis is still required. The CIP serves as a funding mechanism that helps prioritize funding for projects. It is not appropriate funds or otherwise commit the county to particular projects. The CIP is therefore not considered a project as defined by CEQA, and therefore is not a, it is not subject to environmental review. Next slide. To conclude, staff recommends the planning commission take the recommended actions as listed on page one of the February eighteen staff report. Including review and consider the new CIP projects conformity with government code sections six five four zero one and six five four zero two. Report county planning commission's conformity findings to the Board of Supervisors. And lastly, determine the planning commission's review of the CIP is not a project pursuant to CEQA. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions your commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venegas. Commissioner Bradley.
Thank you, Ms. Venegas. I, in the staff report, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused. You've got an attachment A that has a new projects, five-year CIP, and I'm not sure that, how does the numbering then relate to your attachment B? Right? And also on the attachment A, the budget is interesting. You have construction costs of five hundred dollars for ADA justification and compliance? Or is that five hundred thousand? Is this truncated in terms of funding?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. So the sheets that you're looking at in attachment A, the sources of funds, that information is provided by general services. So these project detail sheets are provided through, they're included in the CIP program document itself that the general services puts together. So I wouldn't be able to provide any information based off of what the funds or source of funds, and I wouldn't be able to provide details on that.
All right, I guess I can, I guess I can call someone in public works and they can tell me if we're really spending all this time to approve something that's a five hundred dollar cost. Or a three hundred fifty dollar cost. It's, it's a little bit insane that you can't just, you know, combine them all into just operate, you know, maintenance and repair. But then how does this, the general services list relate to your chart of attachment B? Because the numbering doesn't really overlap, right? You've got CIP program number three, which is the upgrading renovation of security features. But over here in attachment A, that's not really the number for it. So are they supposed to match?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yes, they should match. They should go in order. So if you're looking at the first project, which is listed as the GS Countywide ADA Implementation Plan dash projects.
Okay.
First project on, so that coordinates with the list that is attachment B. So it shows that as page two.
Okay. All right. Thank you for walking me through that.
Yeah, so, yeah, you just go ahead and just follow through the projects that way.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, any other commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Cooney. And you are muted.
I just have a, a comment on Commissioner Bradley's question. I think all these numbers in here are thousands.
Hope so.
Yeah, no, the construction cost of a, of a new fire station isn't eight thousand dollars. So, you know. But I, I assumed you, you were jumping to that conclusion yourself.
Yeah, yeah. Or, you know, pavement, pavement isn't seven hundred fifty bucks. Maybe to start up the machine at seven fifty.
Mr. Villalobos, is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, there's no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lackey, do, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chair, no, staff does not have any additional information or comments to provide at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So do we need a, a motion here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move. Commissioner Cooney, you go.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, if, if you're ready, I am prepared to move that we follow the recommendations and procedures set forth on pages one and two of our staff report for today's date. As set forth by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Bradley?
Second.
Great. Okay, Mr. Villalobos, we, we have a, a motion ready for vote.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, I believe that concludes today's agenda.
Shortest meeting ever. Shortest meeting ever. Yay, good job, Chair Farini.
All right, okay. Very good, everyone. Well, we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.